Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call in to order the Board of Alderman's regular scheduled meeting for Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. If we may all just please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the same prayer, please. Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, I will recognize City Clerk Michael Dalton to conduct the roll call, please.
President.
Alderman Kavawa.
Present.
Alderman Carter.
You're muted. Yeah, she's here, okay.
Alderman DJO Binkawa.
Here, Mike. You're still low, though, buddy. She's here. You're still muted.
Alderman Doisso. Alderman Jeffrey Hunter.
Present.
Alderman Loetzel.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujame.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
She's here? I have trouble connecting. Okay, but she's here. She's in the building.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Pernaruski is not here. Now, we have 14 present, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. Just for the record, our president, Paul Pernaruski, is on vacation. We hope he's having a great time, and we wish him safe travels home. And Alderman Belinda Weaver is momentarily getting online on her phone. We do not have any scheduled presentations. We'll go right into public speaking. For all the callers, please state your name and address. You have a five-minute time limit, and I will inform you when you have one minute left.
Okay, you are now part of the meeting.
All right, uh, thank you. And, um, good evening, honorable members of the Board of Aldermen. It's been a long time before I had an opportunity to actually speak to you in a while. Uh, but, uh, I hear you're going to formulate a task force to look at disparities.
For the record, could you please state your name and address? Although we know who you are.
For the record, oh, okay. For the record, my name is Larry Butler, State Representative, 72nd District. I live at 70 Blackman Road, Waterbury, Connecticut. All right, uh, so, um, I, uh, understand that you're actually considering formulating a task force to look at some disparities in, um, the minority, uh, community. And I want to speak to, uh, that as it pertains to not only minorities, but specifically African-American community. Uh, there is some areas that need to be addressed. I would point out some areas, and then I have a suggestion for something you could put in place now. Uh, one of the areas is, um, access to health care. Waterbury, um, has the highest infant mortality rate in the state. Certainly, um, you could work with our community partners like Waterbury Hospital, St. Mary's Hospital, State Well Center, um, and, um, other, um, uh, health, um, initiatives in the city to address that and other access to health care. Also, transportation in the city is, um, something that needs to be addressed. Uh, we have, um, transportation to have access to food, education and jobs is something that we need to really work on. Maybe have a connection to transportation to, um, industrial centers, um, in Prospect, Cheshire, Watertown. Certainly, um, if we had, uh, some kind of schedule of extending our transportation, we could partner with some.
I think we've lost audio. We just need to follow up, do more of that, and make sure that, um...
Mr. Butler, please hold on.
Okay. Can you hear me? Can I speak?
Yes, we can hear you now. Yes.
Okay. Have you heard me all along?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you heard what I previously said. Okay. Any rate, um, so, uh, talks about access to health care, um, transportation, and, um, talks about access to food. And, uh, Greater Waterbury Health Partnership put out a report, I think, that you should all read to talk about. It talks about, um, some of the crucial areas in the city that need to be addressed. I don't particularly, um, know the answers, but I know that these are some, uh, very intelligent people and, um, stakeholders in the community that can help you. The one area that I think you could do something right now is in the area of jobs, um, and contracts to minority, uh, communicate, uh, um, communities by doing a disparity study. Years ago, um, this Board of Aldermen actually visited Bridgeport to look at what they had in place, and they have a great model. And I will also say, in addition to, um, the disparity study, um, that to assign somebody whose, um, primary duties are, uh, frontative action and equal, um, employment opportunities, uh, for decades, uh, it's always been assigned to somebody as their secondary role. Uh, we need somebody to make it their primary duties and to also, um, combine with, um, making sure that the compliance to the Good Jobs Ordinance is in place. Um, finally, I'd just like to say that what a good job in living wages. People can pull themselves out of poverty.
Representative Butler, you have one minute left.
Okay. Uh, uh, with a good job, people can pull themselves out of poverty. Um, uh, back in the day, where we had all the factories, you could go, uh...
You should be good to go now.
Okay, I only have a quick, uh, sentence and a half, um...
Uh, I will, I will let you finish your thought. I apologize. Uh, you were actually, um, mentioning the good paying jobs.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, yes, so, um, the disparity study will be the foundation that can protect the city against all those frivolous lawsuits that challenge, you know, the policy that you will put in place. So that's why the disparity study is also important. And at a cost of possibly $200,000, uh, I think it's well worth the benefit, considering that in the past, you've considered, um, hiring a company from Prospect to do a thing, uh, for the city for, you know, upwards of 150-plus. Um, so I believe the minority community, African-American community is, uh, that pays its fair share of taxes is also, um, worthy of that expense to uplift the community. All right, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Uh, but disparity study is something you could do now that can have a definite impact right away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pelletier, you're on with the Board of Aldermen. Please state your name and your address.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Uh, good evening, Board. I want to, uh, wish everybody a happy Labor Day. Hope everybody's doing fine and well. Would also like to, uh, thank the Mayor's Office, the Superintendent of Schools, uh, everybody under the Superintendent, and including my fellow brothers and sisters of the Maintenance Department. Today was a pretty seamless, uh, brand opening for our school year. I give the mayor kudos in doing everything possible to make sure that, uh, today went off with, uh, without a hitch, um, for the most part. And, uh, you know, we're, we're open for business slowly but surely. And, uh, you know, I want to commend the city on everything that they've been doing to, uh, try to, um, get over this pandemic that we have, uh, across our nation. Also, I would also like to, um, uh, thank this Board and this administration doing everything possible in these tumultuous times when we're living in an era of, uh, so much disagreement across the country on both sides. Um, you know, we're lucky to have lived in a city. Uh, for the most part, we, we voice our opposition, but at the end of the day, we all come together and, uh, do whatever we can to help each and every one of us in the city of Waterbury, um, for the most part. Um, you know, I could say, uh, as a citizen of the city of Waterbury, um, I'm very nervous, uh, at watching our country the way it is now. I, I don't know what I'll be doing voting for president, but the only person that I could see that has, uh, continued to, uh, uh, bring us together and, um, uh, fight for what's right, um, I, I will be announcing that, uh, I have no choice but to write in Merrill Wery for president, in my opinion. I think he's the best man for the job. And, um, all I could say is, is that, uh, we need to continue showing America that the city of Waterbury is the center of the universe. We do get along here. We do work hard together and, uh, show the rest of the United States that, uh, you know, just because we're a city that most people don't know in the, uh, country, um, we could be a model for this country because we need to be, uh, brought together more than now than ever. And, uh, I just hope that, uh, you know, our country could, uh, get in a better place. So, thank you very much, and I hope you guys have a great evening.
Okay, that was the last caller for the evening, so that concludes the portion of our public speaking. Uh, there's no executive session. We're gonna go right into the approval of the minutes for, uh, our last meeting, Monday, August 17th, 2020. The chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli. Alderman Brunelli?
Mr. President, motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, August 17th, 2020. So moved.
For the purpose of a second, I will recognize Alderman Sandra Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved. There's no Mayor's Report for this evening. As usual, under COVID restrictions, all the items on our agenda will be considered as a committee of the hall for the purpose of resolving ourselves into a, into the committee of the hall. I will recognize Alderman Brunelli.
So moved.
Second.
I have it. Motion to approve, resolve ourselves into the committee of the hall, which has been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The first item on our agenda is, uh, item number one, Civil Service Commission, submitted by Human Resource Officers' Office. It's a receive and place on file. It's got a list of, uh, notification of following of exams. Item number two is also a received and placed on file, uh, submitted by, uh, Michael Dalton, our city clerk, and it is a dismissal of Board annual reports from year 2019 to 2020. And, uh, those, all of those reports are available online. Item number three, requesting approval of a substantial amendment to CD year 45, 2019-2020, to the annual action plan in order to allocate the CARES Act funding, CDVG slash CB and ESG CB, as submitted by Diane Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director's Office of Community Development. I will recognize Alderman Brunelli for a motion.
Motion to approve, item number three.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve item number three, which has been seconded. Any discussion on item number three? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. The item is approved. Next item on the agenda, item number four, it's a request for approval of amendment number one to the contract between Employee Services Incorporated, doing business as ESI Employee Assistance Group and the city for an employee assistance program, as submitted by Karen Lang, Pension and Benefits Manager, Office of the Director of Finance. The chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for a motion.
Motion to approve, item number four.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve item number four, which has been seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number four is approved. Our next item, uh, item number five, is requesting approval to accept the award of assistance to firefighters grant for the fire officer training, as submitted by Terrence Baloo, Fire Chief, City of Waterbury Fire Department. The chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for a motion.
Motion to approve, item number five.
I have a motion to approve item number five, which has been seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number five is approved. Next item on our agenda, item number six, requesting approval of the agreement for senior shuttle services between the city of Waterbury and Curtin Motor Livery Services Incorporated, a duly registered domestic corporation having an address at 176 Cross Road, Waterford, Connecticut, as submitted by Diane Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development. The chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for a motion.
Motion to approve, item number six.
I have a motion to approve item number six, which has been seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number six is approved. Next item, item number seven, requesting approval of a professional service agreement with Aaron Associates of Connecticut Incorporated in the amount of $30,000 for providing on-call water distribution SCADA hardware maintenance and repair and system software support services, as submitted by Robert Langnauer, Water Superintendent, Bureau of Water. The chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for a motion.
Motion to approve, item number seven.
I have a motion to approve item number seven, which has been seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number seven is approved. Item number eight, requesting approval of a contract for the refurbishment of granite stairs at Hayden Park in the amount of $98,870, as submitted by David Simpson, Director of Public Works, Department of Public Works. The chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to approve, item number eight.
I have a motion to approve item number eight, which has been seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
The chair recognizes Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick question. Uh, we say that, uh, this funding is provided through the Hayden Park Trust Fund annual disbursement. I was just wondering if someone was here that can explain how that works.
David Simpson, Director of Public Works, City of Waterbury. Good evening, everyone. The Hayden Trucks Trust Fund is a long extended, uh, long-established trust fund for the Hayden Park area. Each year, based on the, um, return from that fund, we're, we're delegated a certain amount of money to spend, and this contract is something that falls into that criteria, and these stairs are in dire need of being repaired. We went out to RFP, um, during the summer to, uh, to accomplish his work before the winter comes in.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number eight?
Mr. President?
Was that Alderman Rogers?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Simpson, I was curious if you could tell us what other projects in the past few years that dispersment's been utilized for Hayden Park, if you happen to have that information.
So Alderman, I can give you a general summary. If you want detail, I can email it to you. But in the past few years, we have repaired a shed there. It's used for storage of equipment. We put a new roof on it. We have done some asphalt paving on the sidewalks, and we've replaced some benches throughout the Hayden Park.
Is that something that we typically, do we typically spend about $100,000 a year on the repairs at the park? Just curious.
Alderman, it varies on how much is available or distributed from the Hayden Trust Fund, and that does vary every year.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Any further discussion on item number eight? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number eight is approved. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, requesting approval of the Waterbury Public Department's fiscal year 21 Child Passenger Safety Grant in the amount of $130,758.5, as submitted by Stephen Gilmore, Administrative Captain, the Waterbury Police Department. The Chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for the purpose of a motion.
Motion to approve item number nine.
Uh, second.
I have a motion to approve item number nine, which has been seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
All the women, Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes, hi. Thank you. Item number nine, you mentioned requesting approval. You said Waterbury Parks Department, but it's the Waterbury Police Department. I just wanted to make it clear.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Any further discussion on item number nine? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number nine is approved. Next item on our agenda, item number 10, requesting review and approval of an agreement with Sacred Heart University Incorporated, College of Health Profession for a three-year period at no cost for speech, language, and pathology internships, as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. The Chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for a motion.
Motion to approve item number 10.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number 10. Any, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number 10 is approved. Next item on our agenda, item number 11, is requesting review and approval of an equipment services agreement with Rydel Incorporated for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $69,180 to provide football helmet and equipment, reconditioning, and replacement services. As submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. The Chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for the purpose of a motion.
Motion to approve item number 11.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number 11, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item 11, number 11 is approved. I'm going to also include our standing committee, which is the request for refunds, tax refunds. Standing Committee requests for refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $51,679, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., Revenue Collection Manager. The Chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for the purpose of a motion.
Mr. President, motion to approve tax refunds for overpayment.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the refunds as requested. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? The ayes have it. Motion carries, and the refunds are approved. Now, the Chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli for the purpose of resolving ourselves back out of the Committee of the Hall and take normal business. Alderman Brunelli?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? Ayes have it. We are back as, not as a Committee of the Hall, to take normal business. I will read the consent calendar for this evening. Item number one has been received and placed on file. Item number two has been received and placed on file. Item number three, requesting approval of the substantial amendment to the CD year 45, 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan in order to allocate the CARES Act funding, CDBGCV and ESGCV is under approval. Item number four, requesting approval of an amendment, amendment number one to the contract between Employee Services Incorporated, doing business as ESI Employee Assistance Group, and the city for an employee assistance program, is in consent for approval. Item number five, requesting approval to accept the award of assistance to firefighters grant for fire officer training, is in consent for approval. Item number six, requesting approval of the agreement for senior shuttle services between the City of Waterbury and Curtin Motor Livery Services Incorporated, a duly registered domestic corporation having an address at 176 Cross Road in Waterford, is in consent for approval. Item number seven, requesting approval of a professional services agreement with Aaron Associates of Connecticut Incorporated in the amount of $30,000 for providing on-call water distribution, SCADA hardware maintenance, and repair, and system software support services is in consent for approval. Item number eight, requesting approval of a contract for the refurbishment of granite stairs at Hayden Park in the amount of $98,870 is in consent for approval. Item number nine, requesting approval of the Waterbury Police Department's fiscal year 21 Child Passenger Safety Grant in the amount of $130,758.5 is in consent for approval. Item number 10, requesting review and approval of an agreement with Sacred Heart University Incorporated, College of Health Profession for a three-year period at a no, at a no cost for speech, language, and pathology internships is in consent for approval. Item number 11, requesting review and approval of an equipment services agreement with Rydel Incorporated for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $69,180 to provide football helmet and equipment, reconditioning, and replacement services is in consent for approval. And the request for refunds of tax overpayments in the amount of $51,679 is also in consent for approval. For a motion to approve the consent calendar, I will recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as read, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? Motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. That's all the business we have in today's agenda. I will recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can we, anything else good for the order? Can I speak?
Anything good for, yeah, anything else for the good of the order, I recognize Alderman Dijo Van Carlo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So last month, we gave Waterbury Hospital a tax statement plan, and it's come to our attention that they, immediately after getting that tax plan, they laid off a certain amount of workers. Would it be possible to get a representative from Waterbury Hospital back to speak to us or in writing why they found out, why they did not explain that to us when they came forward for the tax plan? I think myself and maybe a couple other Aldermen would not have voted as in favor as if we knew some of the circumstances. I'd like to get them back in and have them speak to us what their plans are. If they're planning on laying anybody else off, I know they are a private company. I know it's their business, but I think that was an important factor that was left out of their, excuse me, their show that night there.
Of course. I will refer your request to the President of the Board, and that way he can make an official invitation for a representative from Waterbury Hospital to attend our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? The Chair will then recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I would actually like to ask you a question.
Alderman Rogers?
Sherman.
Thank you. I was curious if there was an update available concerning the investigation with the unemployment, investigation that was ongoing?
Is there anyone from the city that would like to?
Alderman Sherman, back to back, Merrill Wery's office. The investigation is still ongoing, but we'd be happy to provide you an updated writing once confirmed with Scott Morgan, Director of.
Thank you, back to back.
I apologize. We can barely hear you. Could you?
I said, Vic, right? I'd be happy to provide an update to Roger after referring further with Scott Morgan. The investigation is still ongoing, so I don't want to misspeak at this time.
Alderman Sherman, the investigation is still ongoing. We will get an update when it is feasible.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anything further? The Chair will recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, which has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? We are adjourned. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Waterbury. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.